Call to order. Is my mic on? Yeah. Okay. Go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Garcia.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Lukas.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Lucero. And Commissioner Romero.
Billy Romero, yep.
We have four commissioners here. We have a quorum.
Okay. Go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, and just one.
Okay. Onto the agenda, item number four. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda as it stands?
Chairman?
Yes.
I noticed that there was minutes for November 13th. Are we approving those as well?
I don't know. Ms. Perkins, are we approving them?
You know, there was changes to the minutes that were discussed at the December 4th meeting, so I wondered that, too. And the way the software runs is if you make any changes, then you carry it forward. And so the minutes ended up being huge because we have the minutes with the changes. And we -- the program that we use is kind of a mess. It puts in all these extraneous pages, and these guys went ahead and pressed, you know, so many copies. Next time, we will take out all the extraneous pages and just copy the relevant pages, because this ended up being kind of a mess.
So are we needing to approve November 13th minutes?
You did approve them with changes, and so this has the changes in them attached to the December 4th meeting minutes.
Okay.
So that's what's going on there. I did a double-take, too, and then I realized what was going on.
Okay. Before we get to the minutes, are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and move on to the minutes themselves. I guess we'll start with 5A, December 4th, and then move on to January 8th afterwards. Are there any changes or additions to the December 4th minutes?
Like I remember. Yes, if I would remember.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Have you heard none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to January 8th. Same question for the commissioners?
Same motion.
Same motion from Pavel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All is in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay. I guess we're moving on to the Citizens Forum. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
This is your highest risk to speak or not.
Do you want to speak?
That's okay. He didn't come up. Do you want to read the rules regarding the public hearing? I think that's the appropriate time to do that.
I didn't bring them.
You didn't bring them? I think the only thing is just try to limit to five minutes. I swear to tell the truth.
Stevens Hall. I'd like to ask Mr. Lukas a question. You resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission last year, last winter, and I wonder if you could explain the circumstances of your resignation. And when did you reapply for the vacancies? Your resignation would have been the third. I think they were too outstanding at the time. And after you reapplied, when were you reappointed?
I didn't actually resign.
You didn't actually resign?
I didn't actually resign. I did talk about resignation, and then I discussed it with the mayor and the town manager, and I rescinded the intent to resign.
So you sent word? You mailed them? You emailed them? You spoke to them on the phone?
Talked to them on the phone.
Okay. And you rescinded your application. They didn't say?
No, I rescinded my intent.
I mean, you rescinded your resignation.
That's correct.
But this was all just a verbal conversation?
All verbal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Are there any other people signed up to speak on the Citizens Forum? Mr. Yarvitz, you're the only one in the audience. Are there the Mr. Hall? Do you have anything to say?
The other discussions on the agenda.
Okay.
Which are open discussions, is that correct?
I think we can hear from people addressing those. Is that right, Ms. Perkins?
Yes, it's an open meeting.
Before you close, I have one final follow-up. Despite your recission, recession, or whatever it is, how you would term it, of your resignation --
Rescission.
Recision, thank you. Your rescission, why did you say, "I resign"?
Well, I guess there are some personal reasons. I don't want to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's going to go ahead and close the Citizens Forum. Now, we're going to move on to -- actually, if I might take it out of order, are we continuing item number eight? Is that continued?
This is a final hearing.
Final hearing.
The --
Yes, but I don't know if it's actually being addressed.
Eight, we are continuing, but you actually need to make a motion to continue it to the next meeting in March. The applicant hasn't updated all the site plan information that I have requested of him, and which we covered in the last meeting. So we're still -- he's still making revisions to that, and so he asked that we continue it to the next meeting.
Can we add a question?
I think if it's okay, we'll take it out of order now that we're talking about it now. Is that okay with everybody here? Or do I need to amend the agenda accordingly?
I need to amend.
Okay. Then I'd like to make -- I'd like somebody to make a motion to move item number eight up to the top and just go ahead and deal with it.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So let's go ahead and talk about it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Can we relegate the site plan, the final approval, to staff and give the applicant final approval? Because there is really -- I think that's a -- I didn't like it in the first place, you know, to be dealing with a site plan review at the P&amp;Z level, because I feel that staff and functions -- is that a possibility? We can rule on the final approval for this application contingent upon staff approval of the site plan?
I guess we could. The problem is that we passed this ordinance, which streamlined some of the application process, so that we only required one hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This application was submitted before that ordinance was taken to council, and then there's a 30-day time period, a appeal time period for that ordinance. And so I thought that this application, because it had already come to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a preliminary hearing, ought to come for the final hearing as well. And I, as the co-administer, had bumped it up to the commission, because there was so much input that I was getting from the neighborhood, I felt that planning and zoning needed to weigh in on it.
Can you still feel that the site plan is lacking a substantial amount of information or revisions? That we should be looking at it, as opposed to just us making the decision today to act on approval or disapproval, with the condition of having the staff approve the site plan?
I guess I would prefer to bring it back to you. I actually haven't seen the final drafts of the site plan.
Okay.
I know the applicant's going to probably ask for, like, the landscape plan to be reviewed by staff, and there's a couple conditions that the Historic Preservation Commission made, that they wanted the Planning and Zoning Commission to follow through on, as well as staff with the issuance of the building permit. So I think it's just cleaner to follow through with the complete process.
Good enough. Thank you.
I had a question also, Martha. This parcel is currently zoned, R-14, multifamily, residential, and C2 general commercial.
Not anymore.
I thought we changed that. Were we approved to change?
Yes. There's a -- we took that ordinance to the council.
Council.
And then, again, because it's an ordinance, there's a 30-day appeal period. That time period has probably --
Passed.
Passed. So you're right, we probably need to change this description, but this is how it was originally advertised.
Okay.
And so that's why it has this description associated with it.
When it comes before us next time, would it be changed at that point, or it would stay as-is?
You know what? We should probably change it, because it will be, at that point, definitely rezoned.
Okay.
So I'll make note of that. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, good call, good catch there. Do we have a motion, then, to continue, call us number PG 2013 26, to a final hearing at the next scheduled, regular scheduled, monthly meeting?
So moved.
What is it, March?
March 5th.
March what?
5th.
5th? The day after election.
Yeah. Go for it.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Should I abstain or say aye? Well, just to move it to a final hearing.
I think you should abstain.
Yeah, I think so. Abstain.
Okay. All right. I think that he'll abstain. I think the rest of us voted yes to move it to the next meeting.
Right. So three to zero.
Mr. Yarvitz, would you like to address the commission?
I would like to ask a procedural question. This is not a public hearing, I don't have to swear on doing it.
Yes.
Actually, this is under the public hearing.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. My name is Mark Yarvitz. The question is, cannot the applicant request a continuation without getting an approval by P&amp;Z?
I think that's true.
Does that normally go through a process where you're voting on a continuation when the applicant has requested one? Just a procedural question.
I think it can go either way. I think the commission can continue it, or the actual applicant can.
We have always acted on continuances, that I ever remember.
I guess I'd like to ask the town attorney.
Well, any time there's a public hearing involved, the attorney's office is uncomfortable with the applicant being able unilaterally change any aspect of that, because theoretically we could have 50 people here to testify and only to find out that the applicant has said, "Oh, forget about it." So we're trying to track these, and I know we've had this discussion before. This is an open meetings impacting event, so while it may be that the applicant would like to adjourn, it may also be that there are people here that want to discuss this, and I think it's appropriate to continue to have the commission intervene and agree to an adjournment or a postponement if you go two or three or four months. That's really bending the Open Meetings Act, and probably the applicant would need to reapply. The problem we're trying to avoid here is for the applicant to continue to push the thing back until a meeting happens when there's no one here, and then the commission votes on it. So the attorney's office would respectfully request that the P&amp;Z continue to act formally on requests to adjourn any quasi-judicial matter.
I have a question for Brian.
Vice Chairman.
So if the applicant would, like in this case, didn't have everything together yet, it could ask to be moved to the next month, and on the agenda would show it rescheduled for the next month?
Yes.
So it would show it on the agenda, which was publicized as it was moved to?
You mean the minutes?
No, on the agenda itself. When it's publicized, it would show that the meeting had been moved back one month?
Well, I don't know. I mean, theoretically, the commission could opt not to move it at all and force the applicant to reapply. So I don't know that it's a -- I mean, I understand that 99 times out of 100, that probably wouldn't happen, but I don't think we can presuppose what the commission would decide to do. And again, if there were 50 people here tonight to testify about this, and this is getting moved, that is a great inconvenience to those people. On the other hand, announcing that it's going to be moved before the commission has voted on it really takes the commission's vote away.
Mr. Yarvitz?
One of the key points for a continuation is when the approval is done for a preliminary -- when a preliminary approval is done, and then there are conditions to meet, to get all those conditions completed, and then resubmit it in time to make the notice for the next month, is often very difficult under a short timeframe. This particular meeting is actually one week later than it normally is. There was no way we would have met the previous meeting's deadline, which I'm not sure what they are, for Ms. Perkins to review everything and give you a summary of what's going on. So thinking forward for another project that has not been created, if a preliminary approval was given, and I know we're not going to meet the ability, make the ability to meet the conditions to bring the package to Ms. Perkins, I would probably think to ask for continuation at that meeting in advance of going through that process. Or it might be something that is a protocol that you could create, so that it's a normal course of events. Because in most cases, if there's enough conditions presented for changes, they cannot be done in a timely manner to meet the next meeting. So I don't know how you want to handle it, but since the site plan and the zone change, and those things have been changed to allow for more expedition, expeditious projects, I don't know how you want to handle it. But that's the reason for continuation most of the time, although it could be used to, you know, empty a room. Agreed. It's been done before. But most of the time, the continuation is because of the inability to get the material ready.
Here's what I think. I kind of like the way it is now, honestly. I like that you, Ms. Perkins, have some discretion over some control on the continuances. You're going to know whether something is contested or not, and, you know, if you think it's going to be, you know, even a couple people showing up to contest an issue, then maybe leave it to the discretion of the P&amp;Z. I mean, there's not going to be one in a thousand cases that we're not going to allow for continuance. In the time that I've been on the commission, we've never not continued a case. So I think I'd like to keep it kind of discretionary and not try to create some kind of procedure where we don't need it. I think it'd be a lot easier to deal with that way.
I agree with that.
Yep. Okay. All right. Okay, so did we all -- we continued, then, the Del Norte property case to a final hearing on March 5th? That takes care of Agenda 9, item number eight. We're moving back down to 7A now, consideration and possible approval of Open Meetings Act. Ms. Perkins?
Yes, that's right. And I gave you a copy of what the town council has adopted for this year, as far as the open meetings resolution. And in that resolution, it talks about when they plan to meet. And so what we are actually looking at is the 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission application schedule. Unfortunately, given the software, we realized that it didn't take our landscape version, it made it portrait. So I believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission meets the first Monday of every month, unless there is a holiday.
First Wednesday. First Wednesday.
First Wednesday, sorry. And then we went -- I went through and actually figured out what the deadlines have to be for the application, for the notice to the adjacent property owner, placing the ad, the legal ad in the Taos News, and the legal ad in the Albuquerque Journal. And that part came out. So if the commission agrees that they would like to continue to meet the first Wednesday of every month, that's what this schedule is reflecting. And I'm sorry that we had it in landscape, but when it went into this program, it turned it around, and we didn't pick that up.
I'm a bit confused. I think in the past, what I was used to is basically adopting the resolution itself, which is required annually, not necessarily just a schedule of when our meetings are going to be. Like, it's basically saying, "We understand and are willing to comply with and follow the Open Meetings Act."
Yes, and I don't have the experience. I need to turn it over to the town attorney.
I think that's what we've done in the past.
Is that -- Mr. James, would you like to give us some legal advice on how to address and adopt the Open Meetings Resolution?
I think the purpose of the Open Meetings Resolution in this setting is to announce the dates in advance for the year. We don't have to adopt a resolution that says we're bound by the statute. I mean, we are bound by the statute. So when the city council, the town council does this, they -- the gist of it is simply to set the meeting schedule for the year in advance. And I don't think you need to do more than that. Certainly not harmful to adopt the Open Meetings Act, but it's unnecessary, because it applies regardless.
Okay. Ms. Perkins or Mr. James, either one, has anything changed in this resolution for this year that wasn't in it last year? Do we know?
I didn't change it at all.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody have any questions or comments?
No, I just make a motion that we approve the Opens Meeting Act as presented.
Do you have a question?
Go ahead. Somebody needs to second it, so we can get to a discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Now, this resolution that dropped here, we're, again, I understand what we're doing is, we're approving the Opens Meeting Resolution, is that what we're doing?
Well, what Mr. James is saying is that we don't -- what we have in the past, we've always just, we've had a resolution in front of us, and we've adopted that resolution. That's what we've done. It's been, for the last at least four years that I've been on the commission. But what Mr. James is saying, and we've never, of course, had counsel, I think, sitting there giving us advice, is he's saying that because of the statute mandates it, that we're not required to adopt it, because it's inherently a part of who we are, and it is adopted, because it's part of the statute that oversees us.
Which I agree. So I believe the motion should be in reference to the calendar --
Calendar dates.
The calendar dates than the actual resolution.
Okay. So how about this? Rather than going through and voting on that motion, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes.
Vice Chairman?
I'd like to amend it to include, or to be that the Planning and Zoning will meet on the first Wednesday of each month for the year 2014.
Excluding any holidays?
Excluding any holidays, yes.
And do we have a second? Pavel, we have a second. Commissioner Lukas, all is in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We're on to?
7B.
7B, the airport, and we're going to limit the long-winded Mr. Thompson to 20 minutes.
If you're 20 minutes out of this guy, I'd be surprised.
Mr. Thompson, would you like to address the commission, or is that you, Ms. Perkins, or?
We, to help you out, because this, because the computer had so much fun chunking out the pages, we did try and separate where the airport started, yeah, with the yellow sheet, and then we did make colored copies. And as part of this, we have the master plan, which Mr. Thompson has on the easel. Then we pulled out sections out of the master, our comprehensive plan, or the master plan, the 2020 plan, that refers to the airport. And at that time, they had an ATZ zone, which was the three feet outside the town limits. But nevertheless, there was a section in there that actually addressed the airport and the need for the airport. And then we also have the executive summary for that master plan, which talks about, you know, building our infrastructure for Taos and whatnot. And then we also finally have the Taos Regional Airport Minimum Standards. And the airport advisory, I don't know, are they a committee?
Airport Advisory Board.
The Airport Advisory Board has reviewed this master plan. They have not seen the section, well, they haven't reviewed as a formal piece, the Vision 2020 Master Plan components, nor the minimum standards. So we're bringing this forward to you tonight, because there was some talk when I first started about you wanting to be more involved in, like, the planning, like, in the discussions for planning. And so we wanted to have an interim master plan for the airport. So we are bringing you pieces, but it's by no means a complete document as far as an interim master plan. We want your input. We want the public to provide input. This will go back to the Airport Advisory Board for their input as far as minimum standards and other issues as well. So we want you to give us input as far as this request to engage in some planning, some future, long-term planning.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Vice Chairman.
I mean, we can make, you know, read this and make suggestions, but the FFA is the one that makes -- aren't they the ones that make the decisions on what, most of what happens in the airport?
Not really. They do the funding. Now, there's a difference between what we're showing here as an interim master plan, this map, and a full-blown engineer-produced master plan. What we've got here is what our vision is, how to do an orderly development of the airport, to where we don't build something and then two years later say, "Ah, wish we hadn't done that," you know, because something else could have gone there that would have been better suited for the area. So this is kind of a preliminary master plan, an interim master plan, until the FAA funds a full-blown engineer-drawn master plan that would take into account all the specifications that have to be there by FAA rules. So we do have the option of laying out the airport the way we see it would best serve the community and the flying public.
Now, Mr. Thompson, we talked a little bit before the meeting, I guess, and it kind sparked some questions I had. But to clarify, just for this commission's understanding, the amount of money that's going to be produced from the town coming up with its portion, and then the FAA producing its 6.3 million, or whatever it is, in this plan that you have here and that you're presenting to us, what are we getting built for that amount of money?
This, are you asking how much the FAA put into what we're doing right here, this, or?
No, 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 no. I think the drawing is great, and I don't know if any of us have any kind of expertise to counter that drawing, but I'm asking, if that's what's going to take place in that plan, how much for 7-point, whatever million dollars it is, what are we going to get built out of that amount of money?
Okay, for, well, as I told you before the meeting, and as the town council stated, the design for the new runway is, I'd have to say, very near completion. It's in the proofreading stages right now. And what we have budgeted for this year in capital improvement projects for this is, I believe, with the town, the state, and the FAA, all funds combined, right at $7 million for one, for the first stage of, for the first phase of the runway project.
Does that get you a runway?
No, not completely. It's quite a bit more than that. The engineer's estimate, which we really can't say what the engineer's estimate is right now, because of the bidding process. If we just say it's X amount of dollars, this is what the engineers expected to cost, that would tip all the people who want to bid on it on how much to bid. And they need to, they really need to do that based on the bid specs and the, you know, all the engineering. So there may be two or three phases to this, depending on what the funding is from the FAA and the state.
Beyond this first phase? Beyond this first phase, is the FAA have an intent to give a percentage contribution, like 90% again in the future?
Yes.
For each, for each of the phases in the future?
Yes. They, they have that set by, I guess by statute, that they are not allowed to give more than 90%, and, and...
No, I think you misunderstood my question, maybe. Let's just say that, for example, this is, you've got $7 million for Phase One, but the, the entire project costs $20 million. That next $13 million that's going to cost to build out Phase Two, to complete the project, is the FAA going to pay for 90% of that $13 million? Or are they done after this, this initial cash influx?
No, they are committed to, to contributing 90% of the entire project's cost, but because of their funding, their funding cycles and, and limits to how much they have each year for projects all across the United States, it, it may take two or three phases to get the entire project done, just depending on how much they have available and how much we have available for match, as well as the state. But they are, your question is, are they going to fund the whole project? Yes, they are committed to funding the entire project. They're 90% of the entire project.
Okay. That's a good answer. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Luks?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
The new runway, is it direct east-west, nine-two-seven orientation, or what is, what is it?
It's 1230. It's 120 degrees and 300 degrees on the compass down the runway.
Okay. Good-looking plan.
Is the, is the plan then for the, let's just say you go through a three-year, three-phase project, where you get your funding, you know, in 2014, 15, and 16, is it the intent to spend the first $7 million before you start getting the second, or are you going to wait till you have all the money to build out the entire project?
It, it would really depend on, on how fast the project moves. If, if the project takes up all the money, the first phase of it, then we have to stop until we get more funding from the FAA. That's what we have to do. But if, if the speed of the project allows, we would carry over one year's funding into the next year and apply for the next phase of the funding as well. So it's, it's hard to say right now. It's just hard to say how fast the work is going to be done and how, how fast the money will be spent on any phase of the project.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah. Commissioner Luks?
Mr. Thompson, can you tell us some of the features, other than the, than the blacktop that are included in this, like ILS system, or, or what kind of lighting, or just educate us a little bit about, about goodies?
Okay. The, the existing runway, 5,803 feet, will, will need to be shortened by 420 feet to make room for the new taxiway. The existing runway is 75 feet wide with a 40-foot-wide taxiway. The new runway will be 8,600 feet by 100 feet with a 50-foot-wide taxiway and run-up areas on each end. We are working with the FAA to try to get the latest technology for, for the lighting, which would be LED lighting instead of incandescent lighting. I, I'm not sure about ILS approaches right now. That's, that's something that is, is going to require studies and, and more FAA funding. We're, we're hoping that it's going to have ILS approaches, Instrument Landing System They are, the engineers have already submitted a study for the GPS approach that exists for Runway Four now, so I know that takes about 18 months to complete. So when the runway, the existing runway is shortened, by the time we open the new runway, we hope to have the new GPS approach to Runway Four already approved. But the engineers are, are, have designed pretty much a state-of-the-art runway lighting system, and it's, it's, it's going to be one of the best in the state.
Boy, from stone age to cutting edge. I love it.
Yes.
Commissioners, you got any other questions?
Anything else that you want to share with us?
Well, the, the main thing about this, this drawing isn't the new runway. We've had this, this drawing out for, for quite a while. The main subject of, of this drawing are the red boxes on there. This is, this is where I envision, or I can, I can see that we would have room for building hangars. As you know, hangar space is, is at a premium out there right now. It's, it's hard to get in a hangar. And this drawing shows where, inside the fence, on, on airport property, we would have room to build 31, possibly even 39, 60-by-80-foot hangars, and 11 hangars that are 100 by 100 feet. So just so there's an orderly process to the development of the airport, that's, that's why we, that's why I've drawn this map here, so we don't build something and then later on say, oh, that was a terrible idea, now we've got a, we're stuck with a building we can't move. It, it separates small aircraft from large aircraft by having more to the southerly end of it, the big hangars for the large aircraft closer to the, to the new runway, and the smaller aircraft hangars more to the north. That way, less likely to have an incursion between the large and small aircraft. It's, it's really just here to have an orderly development of, of the airport.
Would the, the hangars be built on the same concept that Bob Draper built? The northern hangars where he builds them, sells them, and then they revert to town after 20 years?
That would be, that, that's an ideal situation for the town, because then the town doesn't put any money out for, for the building.
But look at, behind you, I see, I see a response there.
Reasonable minds can differ whether that's an ideal situation for the town.
On the other hand, if, if the town were to go into the construction and pay for the construction of the hangars, we would benefit from immediate...
Rental income.
Rental income.
Rental income.
The existing set of 16 T-hangers that we've got right now, there's about seven or eight years left on that, on that ground lease, and then the improvements revert to the town, and that is, is going to be roughly $60,000 to $65,000 worth of rental income annually for, for the town. So, so there's, there's pretty good potential there for, for the town if, to pay back a loan if, if we had to go that way to build our own hangars, rather than the way the last set of T-hangers was built.
What do the annual maintenance costs for a municipal airport this size?
Well, I can tell you, I, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but our annual budget, including personnel, is right around $142,000.
And that's with the, the physical maintenance of the runways and all that as well?
Yes. Well, the state actually gives us an additional $10,000 a year for maintenance items like light bulbs, pavement patch material, things like that. So you could, you could say 142,000 plus what the state gives us, so about 150, 152,000 a year for personnel, fuel, pavement maintenance, mowing, things like that. So, yeah, that's, that's about what it is.
So with the, with the new runway, that, that budget should be going up, right?
The budget will have to go up some because, well, even, even in the wintertime, when we have to plow snow, we're, we're plowing 5,800 feet by 75 feet of runway. We're going to add 8,600 feet by 100 feet. So even the fuel cost will go up, the electrical, the, the electric bill will be higher. Yeah, it, it will go up.
Commissioner Garcia?
You answered the question. Yes.
I would say you answered the question. You answered the question.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Perkins, are we supposed to do anything with this, or you just want to get our feedback?
I just wanted to get your feedback. The master plan, the current one, the Vision 2020, in that one paragraph pretty much summarizes kind of, I thought pretty well what the goal of the airport is and what we foresee is the future. I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add as far as goals. I, I think basically we have the documents, we just need to put them together as far as interim master plan. I don't know how you feel.
Get it done by September.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak?
Mark.
Mr. Yarvitz?
Is this also a local hearing?
Uh, no, it's just discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I'm interested in the auxiliary services that may or may not grow the community economically in terms of, as an airport expands, might there someday be a small hotel out there? A car rental service, a restaurant, additional commercial-zoned property that contributes to the development of the airport? And I understand the concept of through the fence and not through the fence anymore, as the FAA has adjusted it over the years, unlike in Orlando, Florida, where John Travolta can fly into the airport and walk out of his plane to his home. That will not occur anymore, correct, because of the security issues? Now, I understand that the narrowest part of the old runway is currently too narrow to be safe and secure from the terrorists lurking in Taos County. Is that correct?
I don't know what you mean by the narrowest part. Are you talking about this area here?
Yes.
Right now, there's a barbed wire fence on the east side of that, and we have had some, some people come through that fence. One, a couple of years ago, actually broke through the fence in a, in a car and drove up and down the runway. They were arrested. But...
Arrested for what?
Arrested for what?
Yeah. What was the actual charge?
Criminal damage to property.
I wasn't at the airport at that time. I believe they had, they had warrants. I don't know.
Trespassing, I guess. My question has to do more with, I understand the nature of the western side of the airport. I'm, I'm questioning the eastern side of the airport, the idea of discussions I've had over the last 15 years with the county, with the airport, with the fire department, with all the different auxiliary groups, looking to participate in a well-designed growth plan that does not only include runways and hangars, but all the rest of that stuff. So that's what I thought hopefully this would be a discussion about. There is a parcel of land that the Town of Taos Fire Department has adjacent to the airport, that I donated to them for the purpose of creating a, an auxiliary fire station out there for servicing the airport and the community, and another road that was supposed to go in parallel, whether inside the fence or outside the fence, I do not know. So all of those things, in order to really generate some economic activity in this area, and the question of whether or not the town will be expanding the zoning area, or the ownership, or any of that, whether voluntarily or not, that's what I would like to hear more about. And have you done anything about this, or am I way far ahead of you?
Actually, there's, there's a car rental agency at the airport now. There's, there is a restaurant and brewery right across the highway.
That's, that's, we're talking about planning.
Well, the town doesn't plan for county land, though. So anything that happens outside the airport property is, is...
Subject to the county?
Yeah, it's, it's not a, a town, the town doesn't have jurisdiction there. We, we can't plan outside the airport.
Can you rephrase the question? Can land adjacent to the airport ask to be voluntarily annexed into this airport district?
That would be...
I'd like to get up to the stage, all right? Sorry.
I manage the airport property. I, I don't know about the, about the zoning and annexation rules.
Sir, to the left, any? Thank you.
Is that something that we're going to anticipate happening, like, kind of like the potential for the annexation regarding the highway, and people wanting to be annexed into the town? Is that what's going to happen? People are going to request, if they have land along the, the border of the, the airport, are they going to come and ask us for annexation?
They can ask for annexation. I mean, the other point that Mr. Yarvitz is bringing up is, and this is sort of what I was talking about as far as the goals, like what types of uses. After the interim master plan is adopted, then we're going to look at zoning. And so with the zoning, we're thinking that we're probably going to need an airport zone. And so some thought needs to be put into, and it's not so much at this stage, but at the next stage, what uses do we want to allow by right? What are, like, accessory uses? And, you know, I think the FAA is concerned about people coming through the fence and hurting the revenue stream of the airport, when the airport has like maintenance costs for the, for the runway and whatnot, and say somebody else comes in and starts renting hangars, you know, just adjacent to the airport, and you're allowing the airplanes to come through the fence. So there are some issues that I believe this master plan is addressing, that we haven't outlined specifically tonight, but then there's also the, the broader concern about what types of uses do we want to allow at the airport? What are we going to try and encourage, you know, as far as economic development? We have a rental car agency there. I know that a lot of the airplanes that fly in, like, I've understood like 90% of them are jets. They come in for the weekend, they want to have, you know, catering, they want to have like a catered breakfast or whatever, they want to be able to rent a car right there. So those kind of amenities, we need to be thinking about as far as what do we need at the airport? Do we need to allow, like, he's talking about fire services, but there's also, you know, like a mechanic for working on, or a couple mechanics for working on jet engines, other types of airplane engines, you know, things like that. So that's where you're, you know...
I, I think I understand what Mr. Yarvitz is saying is, okay, somebody that has an adjacent piece of land, and they ask to be annexed in, now what is the zoning going to be for that section? We would have to address it at that point. They would have to come up, I guess, whoever the landowner is, come up with a master plan on what they're planning to do with their property and see how...
No, no. When you do a zone change now, there's no planning. It's just the zoning, annexation, and the zoning. Then you can do planning after the zoning's approved. That's what we just went through.
Yeah, you can.
But the question really is about warehousing, DHL, or federal FedEx services.
Typical industrial park that are typical for airports.
Yeah, like the stuff, you go anywhere, you'll, you can write a list of all the businesses that could create jobs and develop around a successful airport. And they're not inside the fence, mostly.
Well, I think the, for me, the question is whether the health, safety, and welfare of our community will be benefited more by quarantining all the services within the airport itself, or whether expanding it beyond that's going to help our community more.
That's exactly what I was getting to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's an argument that if it's just a, a little, small municipal airport with not any real improvement from where we are now, that we wouldn't do any expansion at all. But if the whole purpose of building that crosswind runway was to expand beyond that private jet with that catering for breakfast, then, yeah, I think that, I think... private jet with that catering for breakfast, then, yeah, I think that, I think I would be looking at expanding commercial zoning around there to, to improve the economy.
The market will determine that.
Right.
The market forces will...
The question of doing an application for a commercial building, whether or not it's within a preferred zone under the town's rules, or under the county's non-rules to do something, is really the question about successful development. And because the county, maybe the land use plan will pass, I don't know, but because the county has no rules at all, going through a commercial process application there would be a nightmare compared to saying, here is Zone XY, it's airport zoning, you can do these things. And come in and pull a permit and go through a P and Z issue, rather than going through the county hysteria when you do commercial applications is really my request.
I've got a question for Mr. James. Mr. James, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but since this is kind of a, it's a spot zone, really, in the middle of the county.
No, no, no.
No, it's not.
Not a spot zone.
Well, my question is, since it's not really a piece of the town contiguous at this point, can somebody come and ask that their adjacent property be part of the town?
Yes.
And the county is not going to fight on that?
Oh, hell, who knows what the county will do? But the, right now, we have an annexation ordinance in place. There's an appeal pending, there's a stay of any action pending appeal, so the annexation has taken place. So it's the town's position that anyone that had an adjacent parcel would have the ability to petition the town to, under the petition annexation process, to be annexed into, into the town. If it is annexed into the town, then it's incumbent upon the town to zone it, frankly, because of the assurances that go with the grant, where the FAA understands that they don't control land uses locally, and all they do is ask that we make best efforts to, to make provisions, to try to maximize the possibility that the money spent at this airport will not be obviated, excuse me, because of some inappropriate use adjacent to the airport. So that is height, sorts of uses. And obviously, you wouldn't want an elementary school next to the airport, you don't want an eight-story hotel next to the airport. But the short answer to the question is that right now, the airport is in the Town of Taos, and right now, anyone that wants to petition to annex, certainly the Town Council will consider that petition on its individual merits. Once it's done, then it would have to be zoned. So I don't know how quickly this is going to happen. I don't know if anybody's interested. I know that we've had discussions with the Taos Pueblo, who have interest in perhaps moving some of their gaming activities over to this area. So, I mean, there's lots of things that can happen in this plan, because we have virgin territory here, is extremely important. It's important to my office relative to the grant assurances, it's important to the community as a whole, relative to the economic viability of the airport. So we have to watch what through-the-fence uses are available, and we also have to try to get a handle on making sure that nobody builds anything next to the airport that would create a problem for using the airport. So we're ready to see any application anybody wants to make.
Is there a current zone at the airport?
No, we didn't zone it yet. That's next.
Okay.
Well, I guess the presumption I'm making is that, let's say on appeal, you actually lose, and that that annexation doesn't actually occur, meaning the, the shoestring annexation from the town to the airport. And I'm saying, if you just have the airport in isolation, not attached to the town, does the town still have the ability to annex off of the airport?
Yes. Under that, and then the scenario where the annexation ordinance was invalidated? No.
You couldn't?
No.
So it would strictly be a county issue at that point?
Yes. But we also have a statute, it's actually a peculiar statute, relative, and I think it only applies to the Taos Airport, that does allow for a mechanism for the town to zone the airport under a rather tortured set of circumstances, but there is a specific statute on point relative to this airport that would allow for that.
I have a question for the attorney. If you put restrictions on land adjacent to the airport because of this expansion, is this, that considered a taking?
Not by me.
Thank you.
I mean, every time you zone, it restricts land use, and it's very rare. I mean, if we zoned it to the point where there was nothing you could do with it, except grow jackrabbits and mesquitos, that might be a taking. But if there's something you can do with it, I think New Mexico law is pretty clear that it's not a taking. But, I mean, the point is, we want economic development, the issue is to protect the economic viability of the airport by not having businesses outside the airport drain income from the airport, so the airport can't pay its own bills.
Right. But if less, if you're not developing those services within the fence, then the demand for them is the question of, does, does everything have to be inside the fence? Whether or not it's a one-story hotel, or a warehouse, or any of those facilities that you see at other airports? Are you saying that they all should be with inside the fence so that they're taxed and supporting the airport development?
I'm saying that we need to convince the FAA that any development that we allow does not negatively impact the financial viability of the airport.
Do we have an airport tax at the moment? Is there such a thing?
An airport tax?
For businesses that are, for the, for the car rental service, do they pay an airport tax, or just a lease on a space?
Well, they pay GRT.
No? Yes?
They're leasing from...
There are fees at the airport. I, I've never heard anybody refer to them as taxes, but there, I, I guess you could call it that. There is a five cent per gallon fuel flow fee.
Okay.
So any fuel that's sold on the airport, or pumped into an airplane on the airport, not even sold, the town gets five cents a gallon off of that.
What about off the car rental?
Car rental, yes. We make, I believe it's $7 per car rented at the airport. We make a certain percentage of overnight hangar rentals, like Taos Aviation has a 100-foot by 100-foot hangar. When they house a transient airplane, that's only going to be there for a couple of days, the town makes a percentage of, of that. There, there are fees at the airport.
So you could generate more fees by allowing more businesses, they complement what you're doing, and get a fee off of their services, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to know what's going to go.
Mr. Hall, did you have a question?
If you do.
I'll just make a quick comment on the previous comments, and I don't share Mr. Yarvitz's concern about his sort of lighthearted reference to the kind of people that broke through the fence and drove up and down the, drove up and down the runway. Your reference is injudicious, Mr. Yarvitz, I believe.
I don't, I don't know that he necessarily knew the details of the facts, so...
Right, but his, his comment, without knowing the details of the fact, makes it even more injudicious, I believe.
All right, I stand corrected. Continue.
It's, it's fear mongering, Mr. Yarvitz. It's fear mongering. Mr. Thompson, you explained that the engineer couldn't give an estimate because to do so would divulge, or make it possible for others to know, some sort of bidding amount. I don't, I don't understand it. Is his, is his fee tied to the bid? Can you explain that, that difficulty that, that you were talking about?
I don't know, I don't know a lot about the bidding process. That's something our, our finance department, one of the services that, that they provide. No, the, the engineer's fee is not tied to how much the entire project is bid for.
So why, why can't the, his fee then be divulged?
The engineer's fee can.
What, what fee wasn't? You said that the fee couldn't be asked, couldn't be divulged.
Mr. Hall, I think I can explain this a little bit. When you're trying to do a competitive bidding process, if you disclose the budget that you're, that you have, people will cling to that, and they'll basically make their bid fit that number. But by not divulging specific numbers, it forces people to be competitive based on the actual product that they're bringing to the table.
I, I understand, and I appreciate your help. But with respect to the engineer, so what you're saying then is that because of the components, the way in which his estimate would be, you know, written out or whatever, and, and divulge the, the budget for, you know, the, to draw up these plans, that it would give others some kind of idea about the total budget, or?
No, no. You're, you're talking, are you talking about the, the design of the runbo, the runway?
I, I quite honestly don't know what I'm talking about. You said, you were talking about, we have the option of laying out the airport in the, in the way that the community wishes. The design for the runway was in the proofreading stage, $7 million. There was, there was a question about the engineer's estimate. Somebody up here asked about the engineer's estimate.
Engineer's estimate is, is what they believe the entire construction of this runway project is going to cost.
Build out.
The, the whole amount for building this runway.
Build out, right.
Not for designing it, because they've already been awarded that, they've already designed it. And with public records request, you can, you can find out how much we paid them to design this runway.
That's, that's not where I'm, that's not why I'm asking. I just wondered why the difficulty of divulging it was. So you're saying that this, this is the project estimate for the entire runway, built out to completion? That's what the engineer's estimate, that's what this engineer's estimate is going to...
Part of the design of the runway is the engineer's estimate of what the construction cost would be.
And that's what, and to, to answer my, the construction cost, is construction cost right all the way to the end? Or is he going to say, as the questions have been asked, this is going to be $7 million, this is going to be $16 million, there's going to be whatever? Or, in other words, is there going to be a total figure for the entire build out as a, as a total figure? Or will there be segments? Phase one, phase two, phase three, seven, 14, 10, which add up to 24? That's all I'm asking.
Well, the answer to that is, they have an engineer's estimate for what the entire construction project is going to cost.
Okay.
Now, when it comes to bidding it, because of funding restrictions, the phases, the phases will be bid out.
By phase?
Yes. And we'll see how much we can get done for the first batch of money that we apply for with the FAA.
Okay. And I, I appreciate your, your help. So that estimate figure, that total figure, can I go somewhere and see that, find it, ask for it?
Not before the, not before the bidding.
Okay, okay, fine.
Because it is competitive bidding.
Okay. It was, 90% is being funded by FAA, that leaves 10% somewhere else, that's 24 million, that's 2.4 million. The town says it has to come up with 1.2 as a match. Where's the other 1.2 coming from? Is that the state?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's what it cost.
If, right, and, and whether, it's percentages that I'm talking about, 90, 10, who gets five town, five state, 90% FAA?
Mr. Chairman?
Ask a question.
Yeah, I think we should roll this back to what the original conversation was about, was, you know, just, it was brought, this airport project was brought to us to kind of overlook it, to see what, what development could be done, and it's, it's straight away from that, and I think we should bring it back to the base.
That's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm headed, Mr. Perez.
Why don't you try to, if you can, try to wrap it up.
You spoke about hangars, 31, maybe 39?
That's what we have...
All right, 60, 60 by 80, 11, 11, 100 by 100. That, these are ones that you anticipate building, correct?
Not necessarily. This, that is a...
It's an idea.
Right, right. When I say you anticipate, it's an, it's an idea.
That is what we have room to build for, to build on airport property.
That, that's my question. What kind of, what size aircraft fits in a 100 by 100 hangar in terms of capacity? Way, can you, can you reduce it to weight and carrying capacity in terms of passengers?
Carrying capacity in, in terms of passengers is, is kind of hard to, kind of hard to say, because a Gulfstream V that weighs about 50,000 pounds will fit in a 100 by 100 hangar. But if it's outfitted for luxury, it may seat five to eight people. Or if it's outfitted for passengers, it may seat 20 to 30 passengers. It's, that's, that's kind of hard to say.
I think, Mr. Hall, I think what you're trying to, to ask is, before they build any hangars, are they going to do some kind of assessment to determine, you know, what kind of plane would be flying in here and then using those hangars?
Right. But I'm, I'm actually quite interested in the size of the plane, the type of plane, the size of plane. It seems to me that that's the way to find out, what, what are the size of these planes? What are their capacities?
Well, I mean, I mean, they probably have the studies now, but for every, you know, small plane that Pavel flies in there, there's, you know...
Well, these are, these are all just proposals, these are just proposals for sizes. There, it doesn't say that they're going, they're written in stone.
Right, and I'm, I'm not, that, have I said at all that I, that's why, that's what I expect is going to happen? I mean, these, this was the conversation, and so that's why...
Well, you're trying to tie them down to, to some sizes and weights and...
No, no, no.
These are all just proposals.
All I, right, and all I said was generally, generally. He said 50, this Gulfstream V weighs about 50,000 pounds, five to eight luxury, 20 to 30. Those are the kinds of details that help people make decisions about the size of the plane that's going to come. That, that's, that's what I'm after, Mr. Perez.
I think that that is going to be more dictated by the, the bearing capacity of the pavement of the new runway.
Right, and maybe, and maybe some input from the community, too, as to what kind of flights they want to see come in. So that's where I'm also headed, Mr. Lukes.
No, I, I hear you.
Okay. To answer your question about, about capacity at the airport, and what type of airplanes will be able to use it, the runway, you're exactly right, Mr. Lukes, that it is the runway's capacity, the length, width, and how much weight it will bear, that dictates what, what type of aircraft can come in there. This new runway is being designed for a 60,000-pound airplane, specifically a Global Express. If you look up a Global Express, that's, that's what the, what the runway is being designed around.
And it's, does it, does it also get configured in similar fashions, possibly? Luxury, possibly?
Yes.
Okay. So what, what's its upper, upper limit?
Probably 30 to 40 people, depending on model.
Okay, one last question?
Shut this down.
One, can I?
Depends how long the question is. Does it compound?
Well, I try, I'll try not to. I believe the comment was made by the planning director, and that 90% of the jets on a, are, so 90% of the jets on the weekend, are they private jets? And so they, they fly in and they're just there for the weekend? Was that the comment, or did I misunderstand what you said?
There are no commercial flights in and out of Taos at this time.
I, I know that.
So all planes that come in and out of Taos are either personal planes, corporate aircraft, leased aircraft, chartered aircraft, but they are not scheduled service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Are there any other questions, comments from the commission before we move on to the next food cart discussion? Having heard none, let's go ahead and move on to 7C, the review and discussion. Ms. Perkins, you know, first of all, I really appreciated the red color. It's, for me, it's amazing, because I can really see what was changed and what was there before. It was very helpful. And that being said, I don't know if we want to go through the entirety of all the different changes, or whether some of the commission would like to address specifics within the changes, or whether you'd just like to see some of our edits on it. But I don't think that we need to go through the entirety of this thing. I think it would take an hour to go through all the changes, so...
I agree. I just put a straw man out there to generate some discussion. Actually, Amy, who's a planner that started with our office, has, she actually tracks food, food carts and where they go each day. So she actually read through this, and she goes, well, I have some comments here. And so, I mean, I would kind of like her to talk about... And so, I mean, I would kind of like her to talk about some of, you know, what she has researched. She actually did some outside research, just to get you guys kind of like thinking outside the box a little bit.
Sure. Ms. Ringcomb, would you like to address the commission?
So, a couple of the things that, going through what the town has written right now for food trucks or food carts, we were kind of discussing on whether we really want to just have them stationary, whether or not, because what they do now in Albuquerque and in a lot of places, is maybe they'll start at like the Talin Market in the morning, and then in the evenings, they're in front of a different microbrewery on one night, a different one on a Tuesday night. And so they're constantly moving. And so, we don't necessarily want the food trucks taking over the town and being everywhere, but maybe if we can talk about what areas of town we want them in, that they would have to obviously discuss with each of the property owners that they're going to be in front of their area, what they're in charge of, those kind of things. So we kind of wanted to see what everybody's feelings were about with the food trucks, vulnerable food carts.
And then we, we've also had a lot of people coming in and requesting of me to allow them to like have an area which would allow seating, and then have four or five food carts there, kind of in a fixed location. And we were talking about providing them maybe electricity and water, so they could hook up to that. But then on weekends or like for special events, they could leave and like go to an arts and crafts fair and provide food there and then come back. So we've had several requests for that, as well as what she's experienced, where the carts actually continually move and they kind of have their own space depending on the time of day and the day.
Have you had any feedback from actual restaurants in town? Does anybody?
We haven't heard anything yet at this point.
We have Mr. Yarvitz here, who is one of the people who has asked me, could he do this? And what would, what would I allow as far as the planning director? And there's not a lot in the code to go by. We have the itinerant vendor, and then we have the push cart, and neither one really addresses it. I mean, we have size limitations that seem kind of arbitrary to me. And it seems like we need to rewrite this section of the code some, so I took a stab at rewriting it and allowing that idea of having fixed carts in a, in a seating area in the middle, and then allowing them to go and like service a arts and crafts fair or something on the weekend, or go to Angel Fire. Whereas she says, well, why are you limiting them so much? You know, maybe you want to allow them in certain areas of town and allow them to move a bit more.
Well, I mean, there's, there's some different examples, I think, throughout the country. Like, you take Portland, for example, they have some food cart areas where the carts will never move. And there's like 100 of them in one spot, and you can go there and you can get any type of food that you want. And they're all fixed. But you go to, like, I was in Fort Lauderdale a few weekends ago, and the food carts there are movable. And I talked to one of the food cart vendors there, and he actually has five or six different spots in Florida that he travels to, and he stops at each one of these things. And so when you get to a spot like that, there's kind of a variety of carts. But I don't know if we have that type of demand or supply for, for that need, for a kind of a flexibility like that. So, and then I think the big conversation's going to be had is, is how does it affect other restaurants? I think some of the restaurants are going to be pretty concerned about that. So, I think addressing all those needs is going to be important.
Right. The other, the other thing, a comment I have on that is, you know, when we look at the wording "food cart," you know, it's a cart, but what I've been seeing around town is, there's the cart, and then now they have a cooler, and now they have storage, and now it's becoming a massive...
Traveling show.
And while it's not a traveling show, now it becomes a restaurant. It's not a food cart anymore.
Yes. And that's, that's, that's part of the problem that I'm running into. The environment department with the state is requiring a lot of this, according to the, to the people that are trying to do these restaurants. They need so many areas to rent, like they need five sinks. And then I've talked with other people that are doing this, and they say, well, actually all you need are these separate bowls. But, you know, depending on the owner, you want to do different things. And then by the time, the existing food carts, by the time you accommodate all the environment department's requirements, ends up being bigger than the size in the code. And then you need outside storage, and then you need a grease trap, and I mean, the list goes on and on.
Well, like, what she's talking about is, is a food cart. It moves from place to place. There's not permanent plumbing, there's not permanent electric. It's, it's a food cart. What we're, we're starting to create is restaurants that are...
Sort of on wheels.
Yeah.
Which, we might want to look at changing like the definition from like a push cart to calling it a mobile food truck. And so then you kind of envision that it's a larger entity anyways.
Right. Well, these are, I mean, you know, for instance, the one that they're putting here for the old, what was it, the old restaurant was there?
Next to Sid's.
Next to Sid's. I mean, they're putting permanent plumbing, they're putting, you know, permanent electrical, they're putting storage units, you know, that's, that's, that's a restaurant. That's a permanent fixture. It's not a food cart anymore.
Well, I've noticed that it's becoming more of a permanent fixture.
Yes, it's growing and growing. So, you know...
This is part of my concern.
Where does that fine line break off as a food cart?
Exactly, exactly. That's what I want your help with. And we may have to have a couple different definitions, but currently the code really isn't working for it. It's an itinerant vendor. We have food carts, they're coming in, and they're renewing their vending license every three months. Because their, their food truck is bigger than the dimensions of the other part of the code, which says that you have to, that you can renew it annually. So there's some issues here as far as, why does the size of the cart dictate what type of permit you get? So, I mean, we have those issues, and then we have like what you're talking about. The lady next to Sid's food cart can actually move all that stuff and move out of there. It's not permanent. But there was a restaurant there.
You could take a building apart and move it too, you know?
Right, right. But she really would like to make that a permanent place. And so we're talking about how can she make it more aesthetic, and she's going to be putting in landscaping and whatnot. It's turning into like a regular commercial restaurant. You are correct. But we actually do have some other food carts in town that are coming in every three months to renew their permit. And they get, they have to provide a lease from the property owner that says it's okay. And in some cases, the property owner actually is providing the electricity and the water, even though they have a self-contained cart that they, or truck that they can move to other locations. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's like, there's all this variety here, and our, our code isn't flexible enough to really deal with it. And it makes it hard for me as the code administrator to encourage economic development with that, and at the same time, kind of be fair about it, and figure out how to, you know, separate, kind of, you know, where should the line be? Like what you're saying with, with the property next to Sid's. Where do you draw the line? That's exactly what I need your help with.
I think, I think what Ms. Ringcomb brought up, as far as like the identification of a mobile food truck, is a great start. I think identifying what it is is a, is a really good idea. Because right now, we have a variety of, a mixture of, sometimes trailers, sometimes they're actual carts, sometimes they're, sometimes they're trucks. And, you know, there's a, quite a variety of capacity there, on what something can handle, like the noodle guy on the, on the John Donne Plaza. I think it's a great thing. He's not going to push a lot of business. In fact, he attracts visitors to that area. I think it's great. But if he were to have a mobile food truck down there, you might be affecting some of the other, you know, the businesses. But that doesn't mean that mobile food trucks are bad. I think that mobile food trucks are great. And I think that the idea of having a pod, or an area that's designated, you know, within the community by, by the town, if there is a piece of property like that, I think it's an excellent idea, and I think it could drive, drive more business in this community. Because I think a lot of people, I mean, despite there being, you know, a number of restaurants here, a lot of them are a price point that's higher than what most people can afford on a daily basis. And the whole point of a food truck is it lowers your costs, which lowers the amount they can charge people, which, you know, creates more variety for, you know, our, our people that actually work in this community, so.
Mr. Chairman, there's another concept that is not as common around here, but it's probably just a matter of time before it comes here, are the mobile food trucks that routinely hit the construction sites or, or gathering places, and they just move from, during one day, they move from one place to another. That probably, we should have a provision for those as well, because just a matter of time before they show up, once construction starts taking off, whenever that may be, that probably will be good business for somebody to go from construction site to construction site. They're commonly known as the garbage trucks, in California, anyway.
I think, you know, like, the one that they're resetting up where Leonel's used to be in front of Super Save? The new people that moved there, there's no plumbing there, so it, you know, that's not a fixed building. It's, it's a mobile cart or, or...
He actually told me that he is being provided electricity and, believe, water, even though his cart is self-contained.
Right. But, yeah, he doesn't, but what I'm, once you, once you're tying into, you know, permanent plumbing, you know, it's, it's permanent, it's a permanent building. You know, it's, it's almost a building without being a building.
But the thought was like by providing outlets like for electricity and whatnot, then we don't have to deal with extension cords and things that the fire marshal might be concerned about. And those, you know, require a lot more checking on as far as code enforcement. So, you know, there's this balance here.
But then at the same time, you, you know, this is more of a permanent building now, are you going to require bathrooms? You know, because it is a more permanent building. And now, a food cart or a food truck that's able to move, it's at Sid's today, it's at Albertson's tomorrow, it's, you know, wherever, that's a, a mobile food cart or a mobile truck. I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking, just by fixing that, you know, it's considered a, a food cart, but it's a fixed unit.
Yes. And we were looking at the environment department's rules, and it was interesting to me, because given these food carts, what they're requiring was having a bathroom for your employees, but they were not requiring a bathroom for, for customers. And so, yeah, that is one of the issues. You know, how, what's the, where's the break as far as defining what a restaurant is? So, yeah, you guys are getting all the issues.
And, and I mean, at that point, once you fix that unit there, does it, I mean, now does, do you charge them as a, a food cart, or do you charge them as a restaurant? You know?
Are there, are there any other communities that are our size? I know Albuquerque is really, you know, pushing with this a little bit more, but like, is there like a Los Alamos, do they have a cart thing going on? Does Silver City, is anybody like that have a cart?
In Los Alamos, we had a lot of trouble with food carts just coming in, and we always asked for cash, because they were never there long, and their checks had always bounced. So, I mean, that was like a temporary use permit, and we didn't allow long-term. But see, this is something that's fairly new in planning, this, this food cart. In the bigger cities, it's more common, but now it's coming to the rural areas. So, this is kind of like on the, on the forefront of planning. That's why Amy had, you know, had researched some of it in school, because it is an area that's kind of open.
It looks like you've got a project to figure out, huh?
Yeah. So we can come back to you, but, you know, this is just, again, we thought it was kind of an interesting question. Anthony's bringing up a lot of the issues that I have actually been dealing with day to day with these requests, and it's, they're not so easy.
Because they don't fit in any, any particular box. They are all over the place.
Well, I think, I think you have to define, you know, a mobile and a fixed. You know, that's one, one criteria that should be addressed, is, you know...
And if it's fixed, how is it handled? Is it handled under building code?
Can we move on to the public? Mr. Perez, do you have any other comments before I do that? Does anybody in the audience like to speak about this? Mr. Yarvitz? Like to speak on every subject tonight? Do you want to make a recommendation of adjournment later on, too?
Just a continuation of this topic.
I'll take care of that.
I was one who brought in the request to Ms. Perkins, to identify what the rules of the game were, the identification, whether or not it's fixed or permanent. Landscaping, no landscaping, bathrooms, no bathrooms, sewer, water, no sewer. And I agree with what Commissioner Perez was saying, was that, okay, so, everything's becoming more and more fixed. It's a restaurant. Was, so was there a parking code or not? I'm interested in, I've been, I've had some requests from some people with food trucks, mobile food trucks, that are interested in forming a pod. Is there a location, so that we can be there and then go to Angel Fire or go somewhere else, without any fixtures in place, not being a restaurant, you know, permanent? And, and again, I don't have any answers for my clients, to tell them how we can proceed. I brought in a, an idea to Ms. Perkins to ask her to explain it to me, and she says, let me ask you guys for some help, because there are no rules that make any sense.
So, Mr. Yarvitz, if you remember Montes chart, chart, chart cart, the original one?
Yes, I do, of course.
That was a mobile unit. It was, you would take it off, you know, they'd go to...
You would drive it up? Yes, I do remember.
Drive it, roll up the cord, drive it off to another location.
Well, so was the burrito wagon.
So was the burrito wagon.
They didn't even have electricity or anything tied in. And what kind of permitting did they get? Most of them respond to me, oh, we've been here so long that we've been grandfathered.
Yeah.
Whatever that means. You know, and then the one on the other side from Smith's, that just moved over to Super Save. I was talking to them about what they were doing, and they're mobile, but they're, they've become less mobile. Yes, they can pick up in a weekend and be gone, but they're, you know, weighing anchor over there.
Yeah, when you, I mean, you start providing...
But that place is already grandfathered in, there's many repeat, or do they lose their grandfathering when the existing unit leaves?
See, when, you know, in my head, I see a mobile unit, you go up, you place your order, you go sit in your car, and you eat your food. Now, there's tents, there's tables, there's chairs, there's, okay, if they're providing all that, they should be providing bathrooms, they should be, you know, a mobile unit is, you know, we have, we have, we have to close this up, tighten it up, so that, you know, these small mobile trucks aren't spreading out all over, you know, the whole parking lot.
Unless, unless they are. If you pick a, pick the one corner of the Walmart parking lot down there, and they fence it off and say, we can put six trucks in here at one time, is that okay or not?
Yeah. You don't provide park, you know, you provide, you drive up, get your food, and you're out of there.
Right.
But when, once you start providing seating and, you know, then it's not a mobile...
A couple of chairs.
Yeah, well, I mean, look, look at the, you know, you brought up the burrito wagon. There was no seating. I guess he did, he had spools.
Well, but Mary Jane's has seating, right?
What's that?
Mary Jane's has seating.
I don't remember seating at Montes. Because I always had to walk people in there.
Right, right. Yeah, there was no seating at Montes.
Right, no, no.
Right. And so he just built that restaurant around, the, the original truck is still the kitchen there, isn't it? And they just built it around it?
Was, was stuck over there.
Yeah, it's by the hole.
It's the sign hanging. But no, I've, just like Commissioner Lee and others, you've seen food, mobile truck pods, where there are eight or 10 of them congregate.
A food court.
A food court. They're called pods.
I think it's a great idea.
And some of them are permanent, and some of them come in and go out. And Austin, Portland, Minneapolis, they're now everywhere. And the question is, my only question is, could you come up with some rules that one could follow?
Well, maybe, maybe if, if your clients, group of mobile food purveyors, can make an arrangement with the property owner, and then they go to the planning department and get a, get a permit to do that.
You can't. There aren't any rules or applications.
That's why you can't do it. It's exactly absence of...
Thank you. I'm done.
That's how you do it in the county. The absence of rules, anything goes.
I think that the way that, who wrote, did you write this, Ms. Perkins, or?
Yeah, I took a stab at it. It's, it's just a start from, it's, it's by no means, it's a drafted draft.
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, as far as speed goes, as far as helping, you know, Mr. Yarvitz out, looking for some kind of way to get through the legislation, it's a, it's a really good start to go down a path. But I don't think it's necessarily a good start as to fully enveloping what's going on with the mobile food trucks, as Ms. Ringcomb called them. So, the question I, I think is, do we want to go forward with something like this, or do you want to try to develop a new thing altogether that's not really a part of this at all, you know?
I mean, from what I understand, and I can't find it here, there's, one of the portions of the code says no more than one unit per parcel.
It's, I saw that earlier. It's, it's five point one, two point one zero zero F, and it's marked out.
Oh, here, she crossed it off. That's what, only one itinerant vendor shall be allowed per property. And there automatically says, no, you can't do it, unless, of course, you subdivide a property into tiny little squares, but that's ridiculous. So, that was the first issue that I identified, so well, I can't go ahead and do any of these things, and...
Well, that's why I think if you, you know, if they would stay as mobile units, then, then you could put more than one in, in a location, but once they become fixed...
I agree. I agree. As long as they stay mobile, then there should be a, if you identify what is mobile and come up with a set of rules, and if you identify something that becomes fixed after the fact, there's another set of rules. I think just that separation would be terrific to say, okay, the corner of Walmart parking lot, we can get, based upon some set of rules, it says so many square feet per unit, you can get eight of them on this spot, as long as they're mobile. Just some set of rules to follow, that would be great. That's all I was hoping for.
Well, in the same sense, you know, since I'm an electrician, you know, you would set it up so that they're plug-ins and not permanent connections for the power...
Correct.
Which would make it still mobile.
Correct, but not sewer and water.
Correct.
But definitely plug-in and not sewer and water. Most of them are all self-contained.
Right.
But I don't know how they get around providing bathrooms to the employees in a, in a mobile food truck. I don't think they have that.
Well, people are using...
They go to the gas station.
Yeah, they're using adjacent property owners' bathrooms.
As long as there's one within a hundred yards.
Or can you put out a Bob's Yard out there and, and everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, and then we get to the issue of, of, you know, how ugly are these places getting?
Correct.
So then you have to talk about screening, and that's what, I mean, you guys know the issues. Each one of you have brought up some of them.
So, you know, our thoughts and feelings to kind of...
Is it, is it the direction of the commission then to try to keep developing the model that we have, or to try to develop something separate and distinct?
Well, to define it more clearly, you know, what's mobile, what's permanent, you know, at what point does that mobile unit become a permanent restaurant, you know? How many storage units can they have outside? Once they bring in a, a refrigerated unit on the outside, you know, does that create a whole nother circumstance? You know, then it's, for sure, it's not mobile. So, if you could, you know, consider those options, I guess.
I think you take it however you'd like it. All right, are there any matters from the commission?
Mr. President.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
All right.
Okay.